Thank you. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
All right. Thank you all for coming out this evening. The Clayton County Board of Commissioners' regular board meeting is now called to order. The date is August 5th, 2025, and the time is 6:00 PM. We will now have roll call. That's our next item on the agenda. Commissioner Reeves.
Here.
Allen.
Present.
Commissioner Hambrick.
Here.
And Commissioner Davis.
Present.
Thank you. All right. Next will be our invocation and pledge of allegiance. Tonight, we have with us Pastor Joshua Goodrum from the Miracle Temple Christian Ministries. Would you please come forward, and thereafter, we will have our pledge of allegiance to the flag. Please stand.
Father, we come to you to humbly swear we know how, God. We thank you tonight. God, we ask you, God, to strengthen every hand in the midst of us. God, we ask you to bless every commissioner, God. You know them name by name, God. God, we ask you, God, to move by your power tonight, God, for you said, "The heart of the king is in the hand of God." And God, we ask you, if there's anyone that is sick amongst us, amongst us, God, we ask you, God, to heal right now. God, we ask you to deliver and set free, God. God, we ask you, God, Lord God, everyone that is here under the sound of my voice, God, let them know, Lord, that you are the ruler and the super ruler. And God, we will bless you tonight, God, and we give you the praise. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right. At this time, item number four will be the adoption of the agenda. Is the board members, are there any items that you would like to move to the regular agenda?
Yes, item number 10 to the regular agenda.
All right, so we have item number 10. Let's make sure I have that item circled. All right. Any other board members?
Yes.
Commissioner Hambrick.
Number 11 with the elections reclassification. I would like us to discuss both of these because they were brought to us after the budget. And we're only, what, 34, 35 days into the new budget.
Okay.
And I believe it was Commissioner Davis that recommended either the last meeting or before that we have like a mid-year.
Review.
Right, mid-year review, and if these things come up. But I think it's ingenious of us to just pass a budget and then bring something to us. Now, I know as far as, I know T and D, these positions and all, that, you know, we've had them out there for a long time. And also, I don't want to dismiss it, but I would like for us to hold off because we've just done the budget. And that's on both these things, 10 and 11. So I too would like to move 11 along with 10 to the regular meeting. Also, number 12, which is the budget amendment. And I did talk with Madam Tax Commissioner and all about my supporting. But what I would like for us to do is, if it's any way, I don't know if she's here, that we can look at the books and see what's actually needed. I don't want us to just keep putting out $200,000. We just did that for something that was mandated for us from the legislative delegation with the Ethics Board. We having to give them $200,000. And again, we just barely made it past the budget with not having to do a property tax increase. And I want to be a lot more mindful of what we have as far as the finances are concerned. But if our finance people could talk with the all-timers group and see what it is and bring that down some. Now, if I'm understanding correctly, I believe that that group is serviced, we also service other counties. Is that correct? I think it's, right, I think it's Clayton County, Henry County.
Do we want to address this now?
Oh, I'm just explaining why I'm taking it, either putting on the regular agenda or holding it so we can discuss some of these things. Okay, ordinance number 21, I mean, I mean, number 21, which is ordinance number 159. Regular agenda, so we can get an explanation of that. I know we need to do that, but I would like to find out as far as the year. I think it has something about five years for the homestead. Does that mean that everybody has to go back and reapply for homestead exemption after?
Number 21?
Number 21. It's ordinance number 159. No, 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 I'm sorry. No, 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 I'm sorry. No, that's 23. I want to put that on the regular agenda.
Okay, 23.
But also 21, let me see, what that one was about?
21 is the code, the code for the Quality of Life Code.
Wait, hold on.
From Human Resources.
21.
But not Human Resources, but Code Enforcement, I'm sorry.
Oh, yes, if we could get an explanation of that. Because right now, when we see commercial vehicles parked in residential areas, we call it in. And all, but I understand now that there are some that can be parked and all. So I would like us to get a better understanding so the citizens will know too, and before I call somebody. That's number 21. And, okay, and number 24, I would like to bring to the regular agenda, the road dedication. I don't know about the rest of you all, but I received an invitation, so that's already been done by the legislative delegation. At least three members have already decided that they have a program planned and all. So I'm asking that the Board of Commissioners stay out of that because we have a legal matter hanging with that. And I think it would be to our best interests, reputation and all, for us to just wait. Not so much wait, but just bow out because we're already involved in that unwillingly. But I would like for us to just let the legislative delegation handle what they are handling as far as that road naming. Okay, those are my numbers.
All right. Board members, are there any other board members that have any other items that they would like to move over? All right, Madam Clerk, I have 10, 11, 12, 21, 23, and 24. Is that correct?
Clear.
Thank you. All right. So let's go back. So at this time, I need a motion to adopt the agenda.
So move.
All right. Can I get a second?
Second.
Is there any more discussion at this time? All right, are you ready for the vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it, and the motion passes. Thank you. Next will be item five on the agenda. We will now proceed with our presentations and proclamations. We have one presentation for the Veteran of the Month for Senior Services, from the Senior Services Veterans Advisory Board. The second one will be GFWC, Moro Civic Women's Club, given by Chairwoman Dr. Alica Anderson-Henry. The third one will be a check presentation for our 18 Holes for Heroes Golf Tournament. That final check number is in, and so we want to make sure we do that presentation tonight. And lastly, will be our presentation from DCOO Landry Murkison, SPOS 2027. Board members, would you please come down so we can make our presentations and proclamations? Thank you.
Clayton County Board of Commissioners, honors our Veteran of the Month, Sergeant Beverly Yvette Dorsey. Dr. Beverly Yvette Dorsey is a United States Army Reserve veteran and seasoned mental health professional with more than 30 years of combined servicing corrections, military, and behavioral health. She served in the Army Reserve from 1989 to 2003 while earning multiple degrees from Valdosta State University, including sociology, psychology, and a master's in sociology with a minor in social work. She began her career at Valdosta State Prison, advancing from correctional officer to mental health counselor. In 1994, Dr. Dorsey moved to Metro Atlanta, serving in key mental health roles at the Metro State Prison while completing a master's in professional counseling. She later served as a licensed professional at Wynn Army Community Hospital while on active duty at Fort Stewart. She earned her doctorate in education and counseling psychology in 2008 and spent 27 years in the Georgia Department of Corrections, holding leadership positions such as mental health director and program consultant. Dr. Dorsey has trained others through Georgia Post and the University of Georgia's Carl Vincent Institute. A member of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated for 40 years, she is also the proud mother of a son currently serving in the United States Navy. Ladies and gentlemen, please give a round of applause for our Veteran of the Month, Sergeant Beverly Yvette Dorsey. Clayton County Board of Commissioners, recognize Georgia Federation of Women's Club. Where is the Georgia Federation of Women's Club, Moro Civic Women's Club Division, was officially established and organized in the 4th District, now recognized as the Central West District on May 1st, 1962, and has since maintained a steadfast commitment to community service and civic engagement. And whereas for over six decades, the Moro Civic Women's Club has actively contributed to the advancement of the five community service areas designated by the General Federation of Women's Clubs: Arts and Culture, Outreach, Education and Libraries, Environment and Health and Wellness. And whereas the club has championed numerous initiatives focused on family support, youth literacy, tutoring, mentoring, and promoting, a love of reading among its members and the community. Their fundraising and service activities have included support for Meals on Wheels, Operation Christmas, and used eyeglass collections, root baskets for seniors, art supplies for local schools, and contributions to Tallahassee school projects. And whereas in the past year alone, the club has enhanced educational opportunities by providing essential school supplies, classroom earbuds, and gently-used books for local shelters. And whereas, one of the club's most notable achievements occurred in 1975 with the instrumental founding of the Moro branch of the Clayton County Library System, a milestone that continues to serve as a beacon for education, literacy, and community empowerment. And whereas the club continues to embody the volunteer spirit with hands-on impactful projects that improve lives and the strengthening of the community through direct service and lasting change. Now therefore, I, Chairwoman Dr. Alica Anderson-Henry, on behalf of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners, do hereby honor and encourage all citizens to join and celebrate the Moro Civic Women's Club for the establishment of the Moro Library Branch. Their continued dedication, teamwork, commitment to education, and community development exemplifies their true spirit of service to the community. In witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the sale of Clayton County, Georgia, to be affixed this 5th day of August in the year 2025.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Dr. Alica Anderson-Henry, and I just want to say thank you all again for coming out tonight. We have had our, this is our 3rd annual 18 Holes for Heroes Golf Tournament that we have done for fire, PD, our sheriff's officers, and all of our first responders. This has been a dream of mine because I wanted to make sure that we were always able to get the things we need for our first responders because my mother was a police officer, and she stood in the line of duty. And I want to make sure that as coming in as the first African-American chairwoman, that I made sure that our police, fire, sheriff's departments had every resource and everything that they needed. So please, let's give them a round of applause for the hard work that they do out in this community. Please stand up because our police officers, our sheriff's department, our firefighters, they are the first ones on the scene. When you all call and you need their help, they're there to save your lives, and they deserve every round of applause, everything that we give, every kudo that we give them tonight. So what I want to say also, I'm coming back for the picture, but what I want to say, this year, we have done a phenomenal job. I think last year, we raised $60,000. This year, we raised $91,963.81 for our first responders. This is awesome. This is awesome. So again, I want to thank you personally for what you do. Thank you for going out on those scenes. Thank you for those late nights. I get those calls at 12 o'clock at night when someone is shot or anything. So I appreciate you all from the bottom of my heart, and you will always have my support. Thank you. And the support of the Board of Commissioners. Also, tonight is National Night Out, so we would have had more police officers here tonight. But I just want to thank you all that came over. And I want to thank fire, PD, everyone. Thank you all for coming over, and you all can go back over there after this. All right. Our next presentation will be from our DCOO, Mr. Landry Murkison.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, members of the board. I'm coming before you tonight to bring you an update on the SPOS 2027 and go over the list of recommended projects that have come out of our internal committee meetings and then last week, my meetings with you individually, I mean, going through each one of the projects. Just to give you an update on the timeline, so this is the revised elections calendar that was provided by Director Dozier, and this reflects the need for Friday's special call meeting based off of when the Board of Elections votes. So originally, we had, of course, this presentation tonight, and then a special call meeting for the 12th. However, given that the Board of Elections is at a conference next week, they have moved their meeting to Friday, the 8th, which facilitated our need to have a special call meeting Friday morning to be able to vote on a resolution to get the call for the referendum. So it can be published, as you see here, by August 13th. And then the rest of the calendar kind of outlines what elections has to do to make sure we are compliant with the need for the ballot referendum question, making sure that we're hitting all of those timelines. So also, we had some revised estimated collections that came out. All of those numbers were distributed to our municipal partners, and all of their project lists are coming in. I think Attorney Reed has all but two. I think we're still waiting on, to get those in so we can prepare the final document. But the total estimated collections is 412.791 million. The Board did authorize the Level 1 project for jail upgrade, so that 60 million comes off the top. That leaves 352.791 million, which gets split up, as you see listed below. And once again, these are the lost negotiated collections that were in the last law certificate, and you can kind of see that breaks out, 117 million going to our municipal partners, and 234,923,750 coming to Clayton County. What I'm going to do is run through kind of a quick breakdown of how that breaks out among groups of the county, and then we'll go into some of the specific projects. Clayton County Police, 18,950. Transportation projects totaled 111,925,000. IT projects, 48,900,000. Building and maintenance projects, 53,013,186. And 23.3 million of that are parks and recreation projects, various projects throughout the county. 10 million of fire department vertical projects. And then flooding infrastructure for the Office of Resilience and Sustainability, an amount of 2 million. So if you take all of those figures, that gets you about $185,000 short of the 234,923,000, I'm sorry, 234,923,000 that is allotted. So, and a lot of these are broad categories, but a lot of requests have been consolidated. So when we talk about fleet needs, that's fleet across all departments in the county: police, fire, sheriff, general pool vehicles, and the like. We've only kind of specified out some of those general vertical projects that we're doing. So when you look at the police request, as I just stated, their patrol vehicle replacement program, they wanted, we moved a portion of that to fleet, not all 17 million, but a portion was moved. We did recommend the PD headquarters reconditioning at 2 million. And then, of course, their academy at 16.9. And that's primarily due to the doubling of required law enforcement training hours that has to be done. Their real-time crime center, we've moved into another project that was currently being funded, and then the drone program is not recommended to be funded. The recommended project list for transportation and development, I'm not going to go through all of these. As you can see, they are long, they are numerous, and they are expensive. But there are quite a few that we just simply have to do for safety reasons. Mainly, right off the top is the salaries for folk that work on SPOS projects. Those salaries are paid out. Our yearly resurfacing of 33 million, that's based off the amount of resurfacing we've typically done in previous programs and over the entirety of the six-year program. That's 33 million. The Tara Boulevard Pedestrian Safety Project, 15 million, that's the county's share of that project. There's other money coming in from GDOT and some other sources, but that is the county's portion of that. Our traffic control center is getting an upgrade. There are three bridges that GDOT has deemed an immediate need to replace. The safety railing for those bridges have been compromised, and because they're built into the bridges themselves, we have to replace the bridge. There's bridge maintenance that GDOT has identified in 5 million. We are budgeting miscellaneous grant funds, so T and D applies for a lot of infrastructure grants. With those grants comes some level of county match, so to make sure that we're budgeting for those and not having to take those out of fund balance or hit the general fund for those matching funds, we have budgeted for some of those. And then, as you can see, we continue on down the road with some other road projects. Panhandle at North Bridge Roundabout, we do have a high incident of accidents at that intersection just because of the shape of it and how it was done, so that's been a recommendation. The Conley Road at I-285 interchange, the 1.75 million is to fund the remainder of that study. That is for potentially requesting GDOT to look at adding an exit ramp off of 285 onto Conley Road to facilitate ingress and egress from Hartsfield-Jackson International Terminal in the general Mountain View area. Turner Road Bridges at Hurricane Creek, doing some work to those bridges down there that are subject to repetitive flooding. And then the McDonough Road Widening Project. There's active projects that are being funded by other counties that will impact that roadway. Henry County is currently breeding their widening project from Henry County to the Clayton County line. This would pick it up in various sections from the Henry County line across Tara Boulevard and then Feather Point West. There's a couple of different projects that are kind of all merging together at McDonough Road, but we're just kind of putting one big McDonough Road project funding source in there. There are a couple other projects that I do want to discuss with the Board, but we will circle back to those in just a second. Information technology, our criminal justice information system modernization project. This was a project that had gotten started previously and for a multitude of reasons just was not going to be successful. So IT has requested we go a different direction. That comes at about a $40 million price tag. You can see we're doing some other infrastructure work for that. Our fiber infrastructure, what this is doing is expanding the information technology fiber. We run two different sets of fiber. One belongs to transportation and development. One belongs to the information technology department, and IT is using a lot of T and D fiber right now. So we're going to expand the T, or the information technology fiber backbone so T and D can get their fiber back and do what they need to do from some of our road controls. Our firewall infrastructure needs to be upgraded. Our IT department has done a phenomenal job of protecting this county from cyber attacks. We have not been impacted as much as our neighbors, and we want to keep it that way, so we will be upgrading our firewall infrastructure and then doing some work to our video server as well. Broad building and maintenance, planning, design, and construction, salaries and wages, so these are the group of individuals and project managers that will manage this project over the next six years and have been since we got rid of our external contractors. We do have a number of roofs that have to be replaced in the county and a lot of major roof repairs that we will be conducting, so we just kind of threw a general budget at that. The original dollar amount of 39 million was gone back through and reduced substantially, so that's why there's such a large reduction in there. As far as fire department, construction, Fire Station 13, we've already paid for a lot of the soft costs with that development. That building is set to go down, the new admin building complex down in District 3. So a lot of the infrastructure, planning, layout, design is done. So this would fund the construction, and then we could return the current leased facility that's across the street from Dairy Queen back to the city. The Riverdale, the Fire Station number 17, if you recall in the IGA with the City of Riverdale, when the fire department started providing services for them, there was a three-year agreement for the fire station on Taylor Road. We are leasing that facility for the first three years. At the end of that initial term, we have to make a decision to either not staff that facility or to purchase the facility from Riverdale. And talking with Chief Swett, it would be his intention to maintain that facility for ISO purposes and other just general response. It just makes sense. So we're budgeting out to buy out what that lease agreement would be a couple years down the road from now.
Can I interrupt you one point?
Sure, sir.
What is the status of that, the fire department across Dairy Queen again?
So that, we're leasing that facility from Jonesboro and have been since we started providing service to Jonesboro. The lease agreement has been expired for about 12 years. So it's been a long time since about halfway through my term as fire chief. We've been trying to renegotiate that lease agreement. It's been on a year-to-year basis ever since then with an escalator, so it's continued to cost us more and more money, even though we pay all the maintenance, we pay all the upkeep. And we've essentially paid the debt service on the building from many years ago. So if you remember about two years ago, I believe, we entered into some negotiations to try and get the building and then renovate it. That didn't go well. So that's where kind of the planning for Fire Station 13 down on the admin building started. So this is just a continuation to put that to rest and move forward.
All right. Thank you.
Yes, sir. This is a continuation of building and maintenance project list. You can see there's just a host of projects that we're doing. This is where all of Parks and Recreation's specific projects are included. Lot of park expansion, trail expansion, some playground enhancements, and just doing a lot of needed renovations to that. There is a stormwater problem with the Spivey Splash parking lot that we are budgeting to fix. And then, of course, funding a site master plan for the government circle complex. As the admin building looks to come online in a couple years, all of those, a lot of those county departments that are on government circle will move. So we want a master plan what government circle needs to look like moving forward to include park additions, park renovations, understanding that fleet will be taken down, the old fueling center, and getting that done, but then what happens when some of... But then what happens when some of those others, when central and other departments move out? What do we do with the space? So we want to go ahead and get a good, solid master plan in place for that. And then finally, of course, we talked about the resilience and sustainability to fix. This will not fix all of the flooding issues in the county, but will give us some funding to start making some good headway with some of our repetitive flooding issues and some things that have popped up over the last couple of years. Separate conversation, you'll notice what was not funded in here was fleet needs. So in talking with fleet maintenance, looking at all of our departments, we came up with about $59 million worth of needed fleet enhancements. This goes back to roughly, and I don't want to speak for Jeff, but I think it was somewhere in the neighborhood of about 400 vehicles that are at least 15 years old, if not older, that we have to start looking to cycle out. Fleet has some needs for some specialized equipment for the landfill. And then, of course, also has a need for just some motor grader, some dump trucks and stuff and the like that just haven't been replaced. A lot of his stuff is down and broke, which if we want to complete this list of SPOST paving projects, we're going to need to replace some of that. And then, of course, there's some fire and EMS fleet in here. You see four engines, five ambulances, and two aerials. So kind of the recommendation was, and not wanting to take $59 million out of the project list we just went through, understanding the amount and just the pure bulk of what we have to try to accomplish. We wanted to entertain a conversation with the board about leveraging the public facilities authority to bond these projects over a period of time. The other thing we don't want to do is try to bring 400 vehicles into the fleet at once, because in about 15 years, somebody will have to replace 400 vehicles again. So we want to be smart about how we do that. The other challenge in this, if we look at trying to do this through the SPOST, you look at collections starting January of '27. You would realistically have funding in '28 to start pulling off some of these fleet enhancements. A lot of the equipment that's needed by transportation and development, the landfill and fire, has anywhere from a 24 to 36-month lead time. So you would be looking at potentially 2031 before any of this equipment was here. And we just simply can't wait that long to be able to do that. So this is a discussion we want to have with the board. If the board doesn't kind of want to look at this, and we're going to have to figure out how to assemble or assimilate some of this 59 million back into the project list. So we were just trying to come up with different funding strategies to make the most out of our SPOST dollars, understanding the time constraints and everything that we have with some fleet needs. And wanting to be smart about how we infuse that type of capital into the county's fleet.
Chief.
Yes, ma'am.
On the fleet needs, do we still have that system as far as mileage is concerned?
We have a system, but I will let Director Matarco explain it.
Director Matarco, come on up to the mic.
We currently are assessing points system based on the vehicle fleet. But years past, it was, say, everything at 15 and above gets replaced. Now it's a ranking system, and depending on how much money we're allocated, whether it's general fund or SPOST, we try to replace the highest points down. So we do rank them. A lot of the replacements we're doing are vehicles taken out of service because they were totaled in an accident, or they have major like engine replacements and/or transmission replacements that you're essentially totaling the vehicle out.
And/or appearance. Remember, we had this conversation some years back about, I don't think the miles were there, but it just looked unpresentable.
Some of the vehicles that Landry presented, the older vehicles. I mean, it costs more money to paint the vehicle than the vehicle's worth.
So we should take them out of?
Well, that's why we need the money to replace them. I mean, there's aesthetic value of that, but it's hard to allocate money to paint a vehicle when it's only worth a couple hundred dollars and it's running to invest what we need to replace the vehicle.
Okay, so we can start looking at that, because, you know, you go someplace and somebody's in a county vehicle, and then you look and you see how it's looking, and it just doesn't look good, you know, for the county.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
And then, as I mentioned earlier, will you pull up the spreadsheet that's minimized? And if you will, scroll down. Keep going. Keep going. I'm sorry, go back up. Keep going. Keep going. Keep going. Hold it on. Okay. Can you skip that over to the right so I can see the comments? Okay. So there's a few projects that when I met with you individually, I told you we would kind of bring back and have a discussion because they're large dollar values that we have not included in the SPOST, but because we wanted to have a broader conversation about them. There is $3 million for sidewalk improvements and connections to support the BRT route and implementation. Some of what we kind of wanted to have further discussions around was, could some of the BRT money that's going to provide the BRT route be used to cover the sidewalk costs? As opposed to it coming kind of out of the county's share of the SPOST?
You mean out of the penny?
Yes, ma'am. Or the half penny that's going towards the BRT route now is, can those funds be used to fund the needed sidewalk and connector points and things as opposed to, like I said, the county reducing its share of its allotment to cover those costs?
So who can answer that?
Can you answer that, Joe? Demarta. So one of the funding projects was $3 million for sidewalks and connectors along the BRT route. So would that qualify as part of that half penny expense that's been reallocated to BRT?
They are saving for us.
To cover.
I'd have to look at the contract and see what is considered within that, because that's what we kind of determine what they're collecting that for. If I recall correctly, I think it's for, it's for rapid transit. I don't know if it's actually for the sidewalk improvement.
BRT is a part of the?
I would have to look at the contract and see.
Yeah, let's look at it, and if we can get it from that, I would recommend that rather than coming from our SPOST.
Can we have that before Friday?
Thank you.
The other two points deal with Panhandle Road specifically. And there was $3 million in two separate allocations or recommendations. And Jeff, you can make your way back. So there's a couple different needs. There's Panhandle Road in general, that, you know, I think the last major roadwork that we did to Panhandle was around Michelle Obama and straightening out some of the curves that were there around that school complex. There's a major DRI project that's being talked about for kind of the south end of Panhandle in the county.
DRI.
Development of regional impact, I'm sorry. So it's a major subdivision that a developer is looking at doing. There's two. There's The Grove, which you've heard a lot about, that's in Henry County, but backs up to Panhandle. And then there's another one that's further south that's in the county, but it's another large development that's coming in. So the first one is just $3 million in general to improve Panhandle Road. The second and separate need, although related, is the work that the school board is going to be doing on Panhandle with the addition of, is it three schools? Jeff?
It's actually, it's in the Panhandle, it's not Panhandle Road, it's the Wolseley Road.
But it's a new complex with, I believe, three schools and plus a sports complex. So kind of the thought was around that, is did the board want to entertain some conversations with the Board of Education about how do we anticipate the needed infrastructure upgrades to the roads down in the south end of the county in preparation for that amount of development and volume coming in?
Is that what was listed as, and I had a question about that, about the BOE?
Yes, ma'am.
Improvement or something?
Yes, ma'am. So it says road improvements to address traffic flow congestion and safety related to the Board of Education's development.
Right, but it's listed someplace, well, in one of these slides.
Well, it's listed, but as you can see, it's not funded. If you look at the screen you're looking at now, it's line 71.
So my question to you is, who's going to be funding it? Is it going to be the BOE or the BOC?
That's why we brought it to you. As kind of a thought process around, how did you want to address that particular need? And then, of course, the last one that's highlighted is Grove Related, which is the big development that's going down in, actually, it's in Henry County, but it's just south of Lovejoy in the county line. But this is actually, even though it's related to The Grove and some of the traffic improvements that came out of that study, this is part of a broader widening program, and that's the one that we talked about that's coming out of Henry and then going west back toward the Fayette County line. And is Fayette, do they have a project that's coming their way?
It's a joint project.
It's a joint project between Fayette-Clayton-Henry. So we are recommending that we fund that one simply because if we don't, then there'll be a nice, big, wide road that gets to the Clayton line and stops and goes back down the two lanes.
Got you.
So with that, I will pause and answer any questions that the board has or for any discussions about things you would like to see changed or altered ahead of Friday morning's meeting.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, are there any questions at this time? District one? District three? District two?
Yes. And I think you all knew I was going to ask this one. Okay. I-75 lighting, what does that include? Are we finally looking at the light from Morrow to Old Dixie? Putting some lights there off of 75?
So if you look at line 76, that 14 million dollars that's there that we're not recommending funding, so that 14 million for interstate lighting is just for the lights. There's an associated power bill that comes with that that, I don't know if we have an idea of what that would be, but just to give you an idea, the small section of Jodico from the interstate to the new development in Henry that's on Jodico Road, that's costing Henry about a million dollars a year for the light bill.
So what about that at Morrow? I mean, beautiful lights or whatever and all, coming up 75. Once you pass the entrance ramp, right at Morrow, it goes dark. So, I mean, you can barely see Old Dixie exit. And then, once you get closer up to Atlanta, then the lights start again.
Well, and we certainly have the opportunity to install that at the county's cost. So outside of the 14 million to just install the lighting, then we would have to try and assess what is that annual light bill along that stretch? And then, does the general fund have the capacity to carry that?
So what's DOT's responsibility in all of this?
Georgia DOT has a policy that if there's lighting on the interstate, the locals have to sign an intergovernmental agreement with them that they will fund the maintenance and the energy costs for the lighting. Georgia DOT may participate with the capital construction if it's associated with a road project. What we're talking about here is not associated with a road project. So the money would come from the county, the local jurisdiction, for the capital installation. Then we would have to sign an agreement with them saying, we will maintain the lights, do all the repairs, and pay the energy costs. That's their policy. It's been longstanding policy, I've questioned during the years, but I keep on getting pushed back that. There's no wiggle room in that.
Well, I'm just hoping and thinking that, you know, especially with economic development, nobody can see that part of Clayton County if you're at night and dark.
The alternative is, they will look at lighting when they're doing a road project. It's the same thing as they won't look at sidewalk unless they're doing a road project. So if there's a road project, and they do have one, like an HRV hot lane project, but that's about 20 years out. They will look at the lighting at that point, and if they deem it needed, they will construct it if we sign that agreement to maintain and pay the energy costs.
So what is this that we have, the 14 million? What is that going for?
The 14 million is a value that GDOT estimated for us about a year ago on what they've seen on other projects where they've had to install lighting to give us a perception on how much money it would cost to implement lighting through that stretch. So that would pay for the capital installation of it. And then, as Landry said, we would have to back that up with yearly operations and energy costs associated with it. But if you want to consider putting lighting out there, 14 million is a rough estimate at this time.
I'm just thinking, if we really want to push economic development, people on the expressway need to see that you're in Clayton County, and this is where, well, other than Morrow, this is where it starts. Because coming all the way up from Henry County, you know, it's well lit. And then, you know, you get Morrow, you're still, and then, once you pass Morrow, that's... Okay, well, that's something we can talk about, please, thank you.
Okay.
I do have one question.
Yes, sir.
Have you had discussions with all the cities yet about their projects, their cut, how everything's going to take place?
Yes, sir. So all the projects, the project lists that we've received thus far, some of our municipalities have already adopted their local resolutions for their projects. We have not involved in ourselves in how they selected their projects. It's their allotment that's for them to do. Most of those, I think, like I said, I think we're only waiting on two, which either had meetings tonight or were trying to wrap their projects up. We hope to have them by lunch tomorrow, so Attorney Reed can finish doing what he needs to do. But for the ones that we've already received, which is five of the seven, we've already incorporated those. So we've met with them several times, but once we gave them their allotments, it's up to them to tell us what they want included in the referendum as far as language for their programs.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right. Board members, are there any other questions at this time? Thank you, DCO.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next, board members, I would like to take a personal point of privilege. I just want to say that the Board of Commissioners extends our heartfelt gratitude on behalf of our Clayton County Police Department to the U.S. Congressional District 13 Congressman David Scott for authorizing funding appropriations through this fiscal year 2025 through a community project funding grant and the Bernie Justice Assistant Grant JAG for our department to receive $1,031,000 to purchase 15 police vehicles. Let's give Congressman David Scott and our Clayton County Police Department, who are celebrating their National Night Out this evening, a round of applause. Thank you. We will now proceed with our public comment.
Citizens will be given a three-minute maximum time limit to speak before the Board of Commissioners. Please note that all public comments must be limited to the matters on the agenda or over matters which the governing body has jurisdiction. Speakers must maintain the chorus demeanor and refrain from personal attacks upon board members, shouting, and using obscene language. Following 30 minutes of hearing from the public, the Board of Commissioners will allow the remainder of citizens who have signed up to be heard at the next Tuesday's business meeting. Citizens, please speak clearly into the microphone, stating your name and your residence, please. Thank you. All right.
Good evening. I'm coming to you all with a major concern. On Sunday...
Please state your name and county residence.
Tracy Davis-Gilbert, and I live in Rex. On Sunday, the 27th of July, I was going to check out a back-to-school bash for my grandchildren and found out since they were not with me, they couldn't attend. So what I did is, a friend lives in the neighborhood. So I went to see her, came back, I was at the light on Rex Road, turning to make a left on Dale Road. And when the turn arrow came on, a white vehicle out of nowhere, because I was proceeding to make the turn, a white vehicle came out of nowhere, almost hit me. It had blue lights. There were no sirens, but it was fully loaded with blue lights. So I'm gathering it was a police vehicle because of the blue lights. But it was a sports car, so there were no identifying marks to indicate that it was a police vehicle. To make a long story short, as I was making the turn on the arrow, the car came from, I guess, around traffic that was at the light and almost hit me, swerved around, and went into the parking lot. There was, as I stated, at a church, there was a back-to-school rally, and it proceeded to that parking lot. So I, of course, had to stop. So I, of course, had to stop. When I stopped and got ready to go again, two vehicles came right behind it, and those vehicles went into that parking lot also. Well, my concern is, I was almost hit, right? So what I did is I gathered myself, I made the turn, I proceeded with the turn, but then I turned around to go back to that church. I asked, because there were a number of deputies that were there, so I asked to speak to the sheriff, because the sheriff on the flyer shows that the sheriff was to be there. Well, I was told that the sheriff hadn't arrived there and that he would be there shortly, so I could wait. So I waited, to make a long story short, I was told I could speak to him, by the time he got there, I was told he was busy, he was attending the event. My concern is, when, first of all, do we have vehicles with emergency lights, they're proceeding to an event, not to an emergency? When is that okay? Second of all, I have a question as to, when is the sheriff too important to talk to the citizens, especially under the circumstances? And third, is there not any accountability for our officers that are on the road and they do things that should not be done? Because what happened was so unnecessary, it was unnecessary. They were not proceeding to an emergency or to an emergency call. So why was there a need to throw the lights on, almost cause a major accident? This could have been a whole different conversation and a whole different state of being. So I would just like...
Ma'am, your time is up.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you for stating your concerns. I'll have someone to get back with you and speak with you. I have your name, and we'll get, I'll have someone to speak with you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next is Dr. Henry Anderson.
Henry Anderson, District Three constituent resident, unincorporated, Clayton County, Hampton, Georgia. Good evening, chairwoman, Mrs. Dr. Lea Anderson-Henry, Midam Vice Chair, District One Commissioner, Ms. Elena Reeves, District Three Commissioner, Mrs. Tasha Allen, District Two Commissioner, Ms. Gail Hambrick, and District Four Commissioner, Mr. DeMartin Davis. In continuing with the five major categories and groupings that gives me as a citizen of Clayton County, the power, authority, might, control, and command to evaluate all five of you as our Clayton County Board of Commissioners, I will now continue with the third category and grouping, which is Clayton County's yearly annual operating and operational budget book that is available to all citizens to read online and download as well, as I have done so and made copies of, which this year is two hundred and eleven pages of mighty, awesome, pure, and supreme informational power, as well as a comprehensive, detailed, and in-depth official document that not only gives budget financial numbers and figures of each governmental department and how the money is spent, but also shows, number one, estimated revenues that details the expected income from various sources like property taxes, sale taxes, fees, license grants, splash monies, et cetera. Number two, proposed expenditures that outline how monetary funds will be allocated, spent, and providing of a detailed breakdown of spending plans of each of our twenty-two governmental departments and other Clayton County programs, and our mighty, fine, great Clayton County Board of Commissioners yourselves, because it lists your budgets and your breakdown. Number three, debt services that specifies payments on principal and interest on borrowed funds. Number four, capital outlays that covers expenditures on infrastructure projects such as new buildings, roads, equipments, and other major purchases and long-term benefits. Number five, financial policies with outlines, the financial policies guiding budget decisions. Number six, transparency, which makes the allocations of financial and monetary resources transparent to the Clayton County citizens and other people interested in this information, which fosters accountability for how our Clayton County tax money is spent. I will discuss more and talk, I will discuss and talk more on the Clayton County's yearly operational, annual operating and operational budget book in great comprehensive detail during the public committee section in the next Clayton County Board of Commissioners' regular business meeting, two weeks from now, Tuesday, November the ninth, August the nineteenth, two thousand twenty-five, at six o'clock PM. As always, continue to have a very productive, great, engaging, orderly, excellent, exceptional, and outstanding rest of your Clayton County Board of Commissioners' regular business meeting on this evening, Tuesday, August the fifth, two thousand and twenty-five. Good day.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Next will be Michael Brown. Good evening.
My name is Michael Brown, I live at eighty-nine fifty-two Redskin Trail in Jonesboro, Georgia. I come to you about the urgency need for the Alzheimer Center. And some of you probably don't know, but I'll give you just a brief synopsis of the history of the Alzheimer Center. Crandall Brady, when he was county commissioner, asked me to join the Alzheimer Center about thirty years ago. At that time, the Alzheimer Center was basically a entity, a nonprofit entity, which it is still now, okay, a nonprofit entity. But Crandall had utilized his contacts over the years to fund that agency over a period of time. Many businesses supported the Alzheimer Center, okay? But over the years, okay, that has diminished, but the Alzheimer Center still maintains its identity. We moved over to, off Riverdale Road, to the library there for a period of time, and then, we had a contact person who owned most of the land behind the AMC Theaters, came to the director, Janice Coy, and said that he wanted to give some land, okay, to the Alzheimer Center. And that's how we were able to acquire the land, right behind, where you see all the construction going on behind AMC Theater, you see a building there that looks like a daycare center. It is a daycare center, but it's an adult daycare center, okay? And that's, and that, and we were also able to get a grant from the federal government to do the construction of that building, which is now valued as somewhere around north of seven hundred thousand dollars. Over the years, okay, we have been crippled, okay, with trying to maintain the nonprofit status, because in Clayton County, this facility is the only nonprofit organization. You have a few services being provided by for-profit, okay, but most of them are cost prohibited, okay, and most of our citizens cannot afford it. What we have, we have a facility that people are not aware that it's there, okay? And we've been striving with leadership to try to get that awareness up so we can get our numbers up, okay? As a result, we do several initiatives over the years, but we have a new director there who is now have a plan of action, we have a new board president, okay, Danielle, yeah, from the Tax Commissioner's Office, who is leading this venture. So what we have is a, is a need, okay?
Mr. Brown, your time is up. I think one thing that Commissioner Hamrick was asking, how many other, how many other counties do we service?
Right now, we only have one, one patient that is in Henry County.
Okay.
Okay? One, one patient is in Henry County. All these citizens really are from Clayton County.
Okay. When we service these other counties, do they participate as far as financing is concerned? Do they pay into...
The county does not, because the individual, okay, who is being served has a payment to the Alzheimer Center, but the, but the counties do not, okay?
So the only county that participates is Clayton?
Is Clayton County. This is purely...
I mean...
Yes, ma'am.
So, I mean, when you get Henry patients or Fayette patients or whatever, those counties do not add to...
No, ma'am. So this is our baby, and it has been for the last thirty years.
Has anybody thought about seeking assistance from these businesses again? Are there records of who used to donate or help?
We still have a list of those ones who are contributing, and some of them are still contributing, some of them have left the county, okay? And, but, but again, we have new businesses coming in, we need, we need a rebranding, okay, of the Alzheimer Center, okay? That's what we're trying to get done, okay?
Thank you. Thank you.
Well, Mr. Brown, also too, lastly, was there some, I know there were some discussions before the last couple of years about, in a sense, I don't want to use the word privatizing, but doing partnerships with physicians and different groups to help facilitate services to our...
Yeah, we are still, yeah, we're still working with the, with the, the hospital, okay? Here in Clayton County, we've actually visited the Henry County Hospital, we're working with the adult daycare centers, okay, that we have, adult center, I mean, senior centers that we have in the county as well, to keep them engaged and informed of the services that we've been provided, but it must be something that's ongoing, okay? You just can't do it one time, you have to continually, continuously prospect.
Correct. And is there some type, is there a payment model to where the Clayton County citizens are paying one fee and you're out of, out of county, citizens are paying another, or is it all just one flat fee across the board?
I would have to ask our executive director on that, but I'm sure that she would be able to answer that, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Next is Jane Render. Jane Render, is that correct?
Good evening, I'm Jane Render. I am the Executive Director of the Alzheimer Services Center.
Could you please state your county residence as well?
I live in Henry County.
Thank you.
Well, we are nonprofit, as Mr. Brown has said, and what I've discovered in the last three months is that it is a struggle daily because it is a nonprofit. It is not income coming in steadily. We have our clients, they're on Medicaid, Medicare, or other assistances. In order for us to bring in other clients, we advertise, we do visit the other senior centers, we, I have gone actually from door to door at some of our larger businesses here in Clayton County, and we are just trying to get the word out, and the facility, I invite you to come and visit this diamond in the rough and see what I saw when I went three months ago. It is a need for these adult clients that don't even know who they are sometimes, and there is a need for the caregivers to have relief of time to themselves, self-care, as we always talk about. And so that's what we're pushing for, that's what we want people to discover, that's what we want to bring awareness to at this time for the Alzheimer's Daycare Center in Morrow, Georgia. Thank you.
Thank you.
But in Morrow?
No, Jonesboro. Is it Jonesboro?
Morrow.
It's Morrow, okay.
Behind the theater.
Oh.
Okay, okay.
Mount Zion Circle.
Yeah, how many staff people do you have?
We have three staff at present. We had some, we had staff from, called Legacy Link, which was an adult, and then, those fundings went away. And so there, there are three of us, and we are pounding the pavement, and we are serving these clients with excellence.
Do you all have a grant writer?
We do not.
Have you thought about?
We have. We have some things in place trying to get grant writers. We have not had a lot of commitment as we lay that out in what we need, but we're still, we're not giving up. We're still searching for those grants.
Can you get her off there on the respice?
Yes. The respice is a five-approved bed, a part of the facility, in order to give the caregivers a break. So we want to open that part, but we don't have staffing, we don't have funds for staffing in order to open that part. So that's another critical income that can come in, but if we can't hire, then we can't open.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
All right, next is Mr. David Hamrick.
Madam Clerk, Commissioners, David Hamrick, District Three. April first, last Friday, or August first, rather, the year's going by way too fast. We, the Clayton County Republican Party, sponsored a bookbag giveaway at St. Philip Adese Church on Flint River Road. We gave out over six hundred and sixty bookbags in a matter of a couple hours. What really helped being there, and I have got to give a great big thank you to the Clayton County Police Department, Clayton County Fire, the AMTs, you guys do not know how happy you made those kids, the smiles, the laughter that you gave those children and their parents allow these kids to have just a very, very small moment of exceptional time in their childhood. So I want to tell you all thank you very much. If you look on Nextdoor app, you'll see one of the videos I posted, you'll see the smiles, the laughter of kids actually being kids, due to the fact that being here in the county where we're at, being a Tier One. Unfortunately, sometimes the first interaction with kids have with law enforcement is through domestic violence, abuse, and other tragic situations. This time, we allowed them to be kids, to be happy, to play, and to enjoy themselves. And it was with the cooperation, the help, and the dedication of the Clayton County Police Department and Fire Department that allowed this to happen. So I want to say thank you, guys, we do appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson.
Now, you know, along that line, and a quick note, Jeff, does that mean you're rehiring old Fleet Baiting's guys to come back to work? Just wondering. But as we look towards the future of those sploths, there's one thing I do want you all to think about. With the tariffs and all the stuff you've heard over the last couple of years, we've built townhouses for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the last couple of years, and we're still doing it. We're doing it with Canadian lumber, Chinese appliances, and we're overbuilding. We do need to look at our infrastructure, because I turned down the opportunity to buy some of these. In less than ten minutes, you can become an investor. I told them I would buy two townhouses, I'm never gonna live here, I'm gonna rent them out. I was handed a piece of paper and a pen, said, "The more you write, the quicker we'll make it happen." So I want you all to think about this. When Clayton County tips the scales at over fifty-two percent, renter versus owner occupied will not be able never to come back.
Thank you, Mr. Hamrick.
Thank you all for your time and courtesy, have a great evening.
Thank you. Next is Mr. Mickey Garber.
Madam Chair, respectfully yield floor to the next legitimate speaker. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Ms. Tara Everhart.
Good afternoon, Board. My name is Tara Everhart, and I'm a resident of Clayton County, Jonesboro. I'm here as I stand with Bishop C.H. Braddy and now Faith Apostolic. My question before the board tonight is, on July twenty-ninth, twelve foster kids were removed from a facility for housing. My question before the board is, who was the one that authorized Chief Sweat and the fire crew to come out and remove these kids on June twenty-ninth in the middle of the
I'm waiting for the same answer too, ma'am.
We'll wait, I still have two minutes, twenty-five seconds.
Number one?
Ladies and gentlemen, please do not speak out. Thank you.
How is that question answered? Is that in open records? I've heard a couple of different... I've heard a couple of different scenarios as well. I guess my question is, how do we get, as a Board, get that question answered as well?
As Commissioner, I did a open records request and was told that it was under investigation and that I will have an answer October 31st, 2025, as Commissioner, from the Fire Department.
Okay, so I guess I should not be expected to receive an answer tonight?
Probably not, or the truth.
Can we ask, where are those children now?
Number, a number of the children, from what I understand, have been placed in multiple homes, multiple different facilities, because they are unable to maintain a residence for those children. Where they were housed, they had food, they had shelter, they had clothing. They were, you know, going to school and doing the different things that were necessary because they had no other places to do this. They were in a institution that was good for them. And if another place was available, then the proper channels could have been addressed at that time. But I don't feel like going out in the middle of the night to remove kids, 12 children, from a facility that was providing them shelter, food, clothing, and all the support that they need because they had no other relatives or anyone else that would take any of them in.
For me, I want to say thank you as a church.
Thank you.
I will go back in time, when the slaves went through what they went through, it was the church that bailed them out, even though there was a Fugitive Slave Act in place and they broke the law.
Thank you, Ms. Everhart, your time is said, thank you.
Thank you so much.
So we've got to be getting moved further right now.
Next up is Jamika Watley.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Jamika Watley, District One, Clayton County. And I have the same question. Who authorized Chief Sweat and his fire squad to come to 34 St. Rexro and remove those kids? And also, I would like to know, it was stated that there was a 911 call. How can we obtain that call? But then also, we was told it was anonymous. So which one was it? Did you receive a call? Or was it a tip given to you? But we would like to know, and how can we get that call? Commissioner Allen has already done an open records request for the 911 call. I have not had a response from the Police Department yet, but when I get that response, you'll be the first person I call.
Thank you. Anybody else? I have two seconds left.
Oh, I would like to say this, since I have some time. Those kids are out here, place to place, right now. Nowhere to go, nobody wants them. And now Faith, they were safe. I'm sure you guys saw the video of the kids speaking. And it's, it, it really, it angers me because these babies don't have nowhere to go. And being at that church was their safe haven. And for the, the fire marshals to come in at 12 o'clock, waking them up with flashlights, traumatizing to them. And then if you give us 29 days to correct this, why come back the same day? Not even 24 hours? And it just doesn't make sense. So, yeah, y'all have a great day. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Watley. Next is Zephia Watley. Zephia?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Zephia Watley, Clayton County, District One. And I stand with Bishop C.H. Braddy and now Faith Apostolic. My question is the same as the other two. One of my questions is, if the fire chief came earlier that day around 2:00 P.M. and said that there was deplorable, deplorable conditions, then why not call D-Fax during that time to assist to have those kids removed at that time? Why come back at 12:30, midnight, without defects at that time? I think they were called out. These kids were loved, not only just by the staff, but by the church. Anything that we did, those kids participated. They were fed well, they were loved. There was an emergency move for those kids. We're not talking about how much a fine was owed for property taxes because that has been paid in full. We're talking about these kids having somewhere safe to go. I don't understand how someone could do that to some kids. Those kids have mental issues, they have been traumatized. There's already a bad rap about police and firemen and everything. So for you to be waking up out of your sleep with flashlights, that's more traumatizing to kids. I just think that there needs to be a better system put in place when it comes to that. I have nothing else to say, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, this ends public comments. I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight. Your comments are duly noted and we will move on next to our consent agenda, which is item seven. At this time, I need a motion to adopt the consent agenda. So move? All right, may I get a second?
Madam Chair, approve, yes, consent.
I'm sorry, approve. I'm sorry, to approve the consent agenda. All right, and can I get a second on the approval?
I second it.
All right. Is there any discussion at this time? Are you ready for the question? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it and the motion passes. Thank you. Next, we will move to our regular agenda. We will start off with item 10. All right, and that's the Reclassification, Transportation, and Development. All right, Mr. Matarco, will you come up, please?
Oh, Ms. Amos, you got it too. Good evening, Clayton County Board of Commissioners, Pamela Ambles, Human Resources Director and Citizen of District Three. And good evening to our Clayton County citizens, those in attendance, and those who may be watching virtually. I ask for this item to be pulled because the information that the Board has in the agenda is not correct. Yesterday, Director Matarco and I met and we made some changes. And I need to spread those changes across the, across the record for the Board consideration. On behalf of Transportation and Development and its Division of Fleet Maintenance, Human Resources is requesting the follow consideration of the following personnel changes. So bear with me, please, we have a lot. Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Hamrick, do you want to pull it?
No, ma'am, we, I ask for it to be put on the regular agenda so we can spread the information across, across the meeting. Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
So it's going to be amended?
So, yeah. So what's going on? I thought there was some changes or whatever.
So what was, what submitted in Minute Track that the Board currently has and that's on the agenda for the citizens, that the request itself has changed? So that's why we're asking, even the cost and all that you all see, it has, it has changed.
Let me ask this and ask it of the Board. Can we just, just hold this for discussion or something later, maybe at a, at a work session? So we'll know, we'll know the true numbers and all that? And decide whether or not we're going to stick with what we say about the budget, at budget time, and not wait 35 days after the budget has been passed to come with something? Not saying that we don't need this, but, you know, we let the time pass. And another suggestion I would have too, let's start putting the names of who, who present these different things. We used to do that and, so we'll know where it's coming from and all.
So it's going to be you, Matarco?
Yes, it was something else about this. The difference in the money, oh, and was finance included in all this back and forth?
We, we have, let me, let me say this, traditionally, if it, if it impacts classifications, positions, that lies within Human Resources. Because there's a lot of things that we have to do, we have to make sure that the compensation that is proposed is, is valid, will not create internal or external parity. And yes, ma'am, finance is always included, always has been included in whatever we bring to the Board. So Human Resources, as we've always done, and I've been in this position now for almost nine years, we've always brought these type of issues before the Board for your consideration because it's the positions, the classifications, we are responsible for the classifications and there's a lot of things that, things that go into this before it even reaches the Board.
Which is even more reason for us to have a discussion first.
So whatever, if it pleases the Board to bring this back at a work session, I'm perfectly fine with that. I was, I was following the request that had been made to Human Resources.
Mr. Reed, can we, do we have to vote to pull this for the next Board meeting?
Yes, you.
Okay.
I'd probably be better for me, stand up.
I just want you to talk.
My apologies, good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vash, Chair, Board. Yes, you should, if you want to bring it to the work session, and so we can just make a motion to move it to the work session. And then if, it would probably, you could decide whether you want to move it to a work session and then for additional consideration at the 19th meeting. But because you, because if you just move it to the work session, you all can't make a motion, you know, at the work session if you want to consider it at the 19th. So, but that's up to the Board, however you want to handle it.
So is it item 10 and 11?
Right now, it's just on 10.
Oh, sorry, just item 10.
10 and 11. Yes, same thing, same budget request or whatever that.
So can we just do them together?
If, I don't know whether either of you have any time sensitivity, so I don't, don't know if, if 11 and 12, I mean, 10 and 11 are different from a...
I know, okay.
Oh, okay. Well, we'll find out what's different.
I guess we can ask that question now, if this is a time sensitive matter.
If, if we, if the Board pleases and we want to bring both of them back at a work session, that's, that's fine. But let me say that nothing has changed in the procedures that we have done. But if the Board would like a change in the procedures, in the way that we bring this forth, I would like to know, so I won't waste your time or put manpower where we could be putting it somewhere else.
Well, if, if you don't mind, if next time we put the manpower before the budget is done and, and bring it in with the budget.
I understand that, Commissioner, but I have no control over if a department head or a Commissioner comes to me and asks me to present something on their behalf. If you notice, every time I'm up here, I say, "On behalf of TND, on behalf of elections." I have no control over them coming to me, asking me to bring this to the Board. But if there's any changes that need to be made, you all let me know, we're here to serve.
And so I guess what Commissioner Hamrick was saying, that, so these were bought after the budget, correct?
Yes, ma'am, they were.
These changes after that, okay. All right, so can we, Mr. Reed, can we take, can we take 10 and, 10 and 11 together? For both of them and then we have it at the work session? And then vote on it, or you all want to do it one by one?
May I speak?
Yes.
It's not only about the work session, again, it's about the budget and the budget time. And I recommend that we do, as Commissioner Davis said some time ago, that since the budget has been passed, let's come back mid...
It's a mid-year review, maybe in October.
Mid-year review, right. Let's see how revenue comes in, how much revenue, because again, we were really cutting it close when we passed this budget without an increase. And I don't want to, we passed the budget and come back and have an increase and all, if not right now, in the future. Let's see what the revenue is going to be for the next so many months. When, when is the tax collection and all done? Whenever that revenue comes in, let's see how we look financially.
Yeah, and I, I do agree, but let me ask this question, Commissioner Hamrick. Both of these do identify a cost savings. So is that something, do we still want to count that the same way?
I want to say something on that. It presents a cost savings tonight, but I know from past that things change or whatever. And I know, especially with TND, I know these things are needed. I, I know, because we've had, Mr. Matarco, we've had positions out there where people have not applied for. But again, why have something in place if we're not going to follow it? So I don't want to keep repeating myself and wasting time. So if we would just, again, wait and see, or we talk with whomever, or you, Mr. Matarco, and Director Shawna, and can these things wait? Is there an emergence, are these emergencies, I guess would be a key question.
They can wait, but I will give you one comment. In a specific situation for Fleet, the opportunity, because we had a person unexpectedly leave the, leave the county. So the, the, waiting for a mid-year budget review, if we want to tweak the organization from an operational standpoint to make it more efficient, then we're waiting months to make that operational change. Because we're not advertising the new position. So I understand the idea to have it in a budget process. And TND's was submitted in the budget process. It's been in the budget supplemental process for four or five years to increase salaries. And this is where it was bred through the budget process, through the Budget Committee. But the, the Fleet aspect, it's not time-sensitive where it has to be acted tonight, but if we hold it to a mid-year review, we are continuously holding positions vacant that we want to reorganize, make the, the department run more efficient to the way that technology is impacting the department. So that's, that's adversely affecting our operations as we wait for that mid-year review.
Let me ask you this, Mr. Matarco. You had someone to leave in Fleet, right?
In Fleet, yes, ma'am.
So would it be, I guess, to your department, would it be okay, I guess, if you were to, I guess, maybe replace that person and all? Would that disrupt the whole makeup of your structure?
Generally, if we're going to change structure, it's a lot easier and better to do it when the position's vacant instead of having to let go of a person in a filled position because it makes an operational sense. We, we want to seize the opportunity that this person unexpectedly leaving to make us a stronger organization. So that's why Fleet was brought into this because of the, the situation that presented itself. But overall, the enhancements of the salary to try to affect a 35% vacancy period over six years, that's not getting any better, has been a common request at TND. And it happened to fall into this budget process in a amendment that had numerous things that wasn't passed. So the opportunity persisted to bring this as a, excuse me, as a separate thing for you all to consider. So I was wholly in support of that because it helps improve the department in trying to get some positions filled. But we can wait to a work session to talk through that. I would just be, it would not be my pleasure to wait to January for a mid-year, especially when we have a cost savings on the table.
Well, for some of it. And, and let me say this, as we're talking, just like Transportation and Development, Fleet, or whatever, and elections, I'm sure there are other departments that would like to come and make changes and all that. And as a matter of fact, I think one would probably be coming up soon because we had our Economic Development Director to leave. So I'm sure that's going to be some changes and all that need to be made. So can we, I guess, talk offline or whatever about what's, what's needed right now? You know, with your person leaving and all, and then have a discussion further about doing, you know, some of the things that are being requested in here?
I, I would welcome to have that offline discussion or bring it back for the work session, whatever it takes to have this considered further.
Okay, well, let's, let's do the, let's do the offline thing first and see where we get. Is that, would that hold true with you, Director? Is that, would that hold true with you, Director?
Good evening, Board.
Thank you, Director.
Yes, I would like to have a discussion with you all about our requests.
Thank you.
Thank you for considering.
Thank you.
And I guess to Commissioner Hamrick's point, can we also, I know we can't do it today because it's not on the agenda, but to formally place a date for our mid-year review, saying October.
I think that needs to be a discussion.
Granted, that would be a discussion, but-
There needs to be a discussion with the board, yes.
Doing that as well.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So, at this time, can we go on and do ten and eleven, or how are we going to do it?
Because you all are talking about ten, it'd probably be better to do ten and then-
Then eleven, so we're going to do a motion to hold it until-
Whether you want to table it to-
Table it.
To, or move it from the agenda, I'm not sure what the pleasure of the board is.
Well, now, move it from the agenda, and let's have offline discussions.
Yes, so at this time, you want to remove it from the agenda?
Is it being moved to a work session and for a conversation on August nineteenth? Is that a part of the motion?
Because that's what we were stating at first.
Well, I was thinking that we have the offline conversation and see what's actually needed right now, because, again, going back to the same thing and all, but it's the pleasure of the board.
So, I need a motion to pull it until the board has each board member, or board members that need an offline conversation with Fleet Management.
Madam Chair, what I would suggest is that you just leave it open for the board, a board member to make a motion on how to deal with item ten, and then whatever that motion is, if that gets a second and a vote, then you all will go from there.
We want to make the motion, Commissioner Hamrick.
The motion is what-
But she, but we need to understand what the motion is, so that's what I'm saying.
Do you want to make a motion to remove it from the agenda altogether? Is that your motion?
That's my motion, but it sounds like there's further-
Discussion.
Discussion someplace. But I would like for tonight to remove it from the agenda, yes.
Okay, and then if that's a second, then let's see how that vote goes.
All right, and I second it at this time. All right, is there any discussion at this time? Are you ready for the question? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed?
Nay.
All right, any abstentions, the ayes have it, and the motion passes. Next, item eleven.
Excuse me, but I guess can we still go, I mean, even though that is passed, take it off the agenda, can we move to put it on the work session?
Well, that's what we say, once we do the motion, then we can talk about it.
We know that if you want to have it on a work session, we can put it on a work session for the twelfth, if that's what, I mean, you don't have to make a motion to put it on the work session, right now it's off the agenda altogether. But if you want to bring it back, then we can certainly add it to the twelfth.
All right, and next, I need a motion for item eleven. Commissioner Hamrick?
Yes, same motion.
All right.
To take it off the agenda.
All right, I second it. Is there any discussion at this time? Are you ready for the vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed?
Nay.
Any abstentions, the ayes have it, and the motion passes. Thank you.
And the same with item eleven, you want to just put it on for a work session for this coming work session?
Item ten as well.
Right.
Ten and eleven.
Ten, eleven.
We'll go on, when we do the work session agenda, you all can just, we'll come back to this meeting and just talk about how they, how everybody wanted to add it from there. All right, item twelve will be, we'll move to item twelve. Thank you.
Budget Amendment two dash three, in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars to appropriate emergency operating funds to the Alzheimer's Services Center.
All right, is there a motion at this time in regards to item twelve? Is there any discussion? Do y'all want to discuss it first before we go into the motion?
My point is this, granted, we need that Alzheimer's Center, I do understand that. But the question becomes for me, I'd like to see their budget to find out, one, where is this funding being used for within their operational expenses? And two, where's this fund, where are these funds coming from, from Clayton County?
The funds would be appropriated from the general fund fund balance. In a letter drafted to the Board of Commissioners, a hundred thousand was supposed to go for general operations, some funding for proper staffing, and then fifty thousand for facilities
Read that again.
Was that letter provided by email? Or was that a part of our agenda packet? It was attached in munis, and this letter was sent back in May from the Tax Commissioner, I think she sits on, she's the board chair of that particular board. But the letter was in munis, I mean, minute track, I'm sorry, was in minute track, attached in minute track to the budget amendment. But once again, she listed, and if you want copies of the letter, I'll definitely make copies if you have not received this letter, and give it to both, to everyone tonight.
Will you read what it's for again? What the money-
General operations, a hundred thousand, and it says, "General operational expenses to sustain programming, transportation, and administrative functions." At the time the letter was sent out, they were requesting two hundred and twenty-five thousand. So, general operations, a hundred thousand, proper staffing, seventy-five thousand, and it says, "Ensuring competitive compensation for our skilled caregivers and support staff that meet state compliance standards, and to maintain quality of care and appropriate caregiver-to-client ratios. Facilities maintenance, fifty thousand, immediate attention to our HVAC system, which is in need of repair, replacement, so as not to present a health and safety risk to our vulnerable population, particularly during extreme temperatures, drywall repair, and needed seating in the dining area."
Would anybody happen to know what other income they have? I don't. Did Mr. Brown lead?
Did Mr. Brown lead?
And also-
Mr. Brown, please come forward.
Also, I have a question as well, which is, aren't we handling some of the maintenance over there in that building? We're not? I thought we did maintenance on the air conditioner last time.
Mr. Brown, speak into the mic, yes.
Most of the conversation comes from Medicaid, and from the patients themselves. The average monthly expenses runs between fifteen to twenty thousand a month.
And, I mean, granted, I know you wouldn't maybe know this in detail, but off the top of your head, what are those monthly expenses?
Those monthly expenses-
As far as a break, what for salary, I mean, salaries or what?
Probably seventy-five percent of it is salaries.
I was going, okay, that was going to be my next question, how much is for salaries?
There's no, you know, utilities-
That's what I'm looking for, yes.
Utilities, those kind of things, there's no mortgage, nothing like that. Facilities paid for.
So, board members, what is your pleasure at this time?
Well, I'm just, a thought, to give the side on an amount, not two hundred thousand, because I just see us issuing two hundred thousand to everybody. And can we, can we look at the books, or can the books be-
Yes.
Provided?
Yes.
So, we know what we're doing with the money, with the taxpayers' dollars?
Can we do that, I guess, or CFO begin to look at those, and that we can bring this back to begin to look at, to figure out, to determine, is that the full amount we want to do, or do, we know we want to keep the Alzheimer's Center open. But what level of economic infusion do we want to distribute at this time?
Make that a motion. Yeah, can you make a motion?
Is that, is that?
I think it's appropriate, and it's something that is doable, that we can do, we can provide those books, we have them available, so you can look at what the expenses are.
So, Commissioner Davis, can you put that in a motion at this time?
I make a motion that we hold off tonight on approving, what item is this? My eyes are all over.
Item twelve.
Item twelve?
Twelve.
But it's the-
Yeah, the budget amendment, two dash three, and go ahead and put it on, and make it, put it on the agenda for, and I'm sorry for mumbling, put it on the agenda for the nineteenth of August, after we have received the budget and finance books via Ms. Angela Jackson.
All right, can we get a second on that? All right, is there any more discussion at this time? Are you ready for the question? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions, the ayes have it, and the motion passes. Thank you. Next will be item twenty-one.
Item twenty-one is Ordinance twenty twenty-five one fifty-nine, which is an ordinance to amend the Code of Clayton County, Georgia, as amended specifically Code of Clayton County, Georgia, Chapter sixty-two, offenses and miscellaneous provisions, Article two, quality of life code, subsection sixty-two dash two oh four, to provide an additional authorization for commercial vehicle parking in certain instances, to repeal conflicting laws, ordinances, and resolutions, to provide severability, to provide effective date, and for other purposes.
All right, can I get a motion at this time?
I move that we accept Ordinance twenty twenty-five dash one five nine.
All right, I second it. All right, is there any discussion?
I have a question. Can we get an explanation of what's considered a commercial vehicle-
Emergency.
And, is it emergency?
Well, so, the way that this would work is, from time to time, and this has been going back over several years, several years, there will be instances where, like, a tow truck who's affiliated with having to respond to emergency or accidents on the highway, they may authorize that driver to park the vehicle at their home because they may get a call at one-thirty in the morning, and for that person to have to leave their car, leave their house, drive to the facility, get the vehicle, then drive across to some other place to pick up or to address the emergency, it's going to take too much time. And we have, the county has cited these drivers for parking that commercial vehicle at their home. So, what this does is create a exemption. This doesn't say that anyone can buy, can park commercial vehicles at their home. What it does provide is that if that, if that employer does respond to emergency vehicles, and they have issued a vehicle to that employee to park at their home, then if they are going to get cited, that employee can provide some sort of proof that this was provided to them from their employer, and that would allow them to park it at that. So, this is not just opening the floodgates to park, to commercial vehicle parking on residential, it just carves out exception for those that respond to emergency situations. Same thing happens with some certain utilities, where there will be, there may be a power outage or something like that, and the-
Georgia Power may assign somebody.
Somebody may assign somebody a truck to be able to respond to the emergency, rather than having to drive to the facility, get a commercial vehicle, then respond to the emergency. It just cuts down the time. That's how this will work.
So, I guess code would make that decision as to emergency vehicles or not?
They will go out-
If I see a prime truck or whatever parked in my neighborhood, I'm calling.
Yes, and that's what you should do. So, code enforcement will go and treat it just like any other commercial vehicle, it's just that when they get there, if the employee can show proof that they have that vehicle there with the authority of their employer to respond to emergencies, then they will not get cited for violation of this code section.
What would validate proof?
I wouldn't want to necessarily provide, but just an example would be a letter from, on their company letterhead that says, "John Smith is authorized to park vehicle one seven oh eight."
Every day?
No, not necessarily. I mean, it would just be depending on what the situation is. You know, I don't know, I can't speak for every employer, how they would determine when it's emergency, but that would be something.
And the other portion of that is, how are we, how would we be policing that? I park an eighteen-wheeler in my driveway, saying, hey, I'm on call if something goes on. How are we policing that?
Chair, Vice Chair, Board of Commissioners, Commissioner Davis answered your question. In most instances, the code enforcement is providing a violation that's inhibited of the code, they give what they call a notice of violation. So, what happens is, it has a period of time where the person that's getting the citation can provide compliance with that. So, we would assume what would happen, if the notice of violation is provided, then if the owner of the truck can now provide evidence that his employer or her employer has provided them the ability to drive the vehicle at home because of an emergency purpose, then that's where it would stop. Code would stop at the notice of violation opposed to a citation being provided.
So, there is the policing right there.
Yes.
That's what I needed.
All right, is there any more discussion at this time? Are you ready for the question? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions, the ayes have it, and the motion passes. Next will be item number twenty-three, Resolution twenty twenty-five dash one sixty-one.
Resolution twenty twenty-five one sixty-one is a resolution of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners, Georgia, to authorize a referendum election, allowing the qualified voters of Clayton County to determine whether to approve an additional homestead exemption from Clayton County anterorum taxes for disabled veterans, senior citizens, unremarried surviving spouses of a police officer, or firefighter killed in line of duty, and one hundred percent disabled residents to begin on January first, twenty twenty-six, and end on December thirty of twenty thirty, to authorize the chairwoman to perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to provide an effective date of this resolution, for other purposes.
Can I get a motion for Resolution twenty twenty-five dash one sixty-one?
So, move.
All right, I second it. Any discussion at this time?
Yes.
Commissioner Hamrick?
I just want to be clear, am I going to have to apply every year for homestead, or is it like it is now, once you apply, that's it? Or how is this going to work?
So, first step is, let me go back and provide a little context. This is in response to the response, to the five eighty-one, this is what this board authorized, and with the help of the legislative delegation, they were able to get passed by the General Assembly, the ability for voters to go out and provide the opportunity for them to vote whether to add an additional homestead exemption. And so, if that passes, then the Tax Commissioner will provide for that homestead exemption just like any other homestead exemption that is in place at the time. So, as far as how that would work, whether she, whether it would be having to apply every year, I don't believe that's the case. I think it's, but I don't know that for sure.
Okay, because in it, it reads every five years.
So, what this, what this does is provide the, it provides the exemption for a period of five years, and if you recall, some of the discussion that was done back in February of this year, is that you wanted to find out what was going to be the fiscal impact of, and putting this exemption in. So, having that five-year period allows you to see what the fiscal impact is of providing this additional homestead exemption. Presumably, in another five years, if this, if you find that there's no issue, you could always bring it back for another referendum election to, for another period of time, make it permanent, that's going to be up to the Board of what you want to do. But this is the five, the reason why there's a five-year period is because you wanted to see what the fiscal impact was going to be while this exemption is in place.
All right, any other questions at this time?
Sorry about that, just to add a little more context, as our attorney talked about five eighty-one, we all know that this bill has now morphed into House Bill eight seventy. And so, what we're looking to do is ensure that we educate our general public about the impact of the new referendum that would be on the ballot in November. So, one of the things we're asking from each Commissioner is that if you have an upcoming HOA meeting, or you have any town hall meetings that are being scheduled, then the Tax Commissioner, or there will be some talking points to be able to provide to the citizens to give them better context to what House Bill eight seventy is all about.
Thank you. All right, are you ready for the vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions, the ayes have it, and the motion passes. Next is Resolution twenty twenty-five dash one sixty-two.
Resolution twenty twenty-five one sixty-two is a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Clayton County, Georgia, to support a road renaming dedication event in Clayton County, Georgia, hosted by Commissioner Devontae Davis in partnership with members of the Clayton County State Legislative Delegation and the Clayton County Police Department to authorize the county and its department-
Hosted by Commissioner Demont Davis in partnership with members of the Clayton County State Legislative Delegation and the Clayton County Police Department to authorize the county and its departments to perform all acts necessary. To accomplish the intent, the intent of this resolution, to authorize the chairwoman to perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution. And to provide an effective date of this resolution for other purposes.
All right. Board members, is there any discussion at this time? Um, at this time, we need a motion.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right. Any discussion at this time?
Uh, yes. Right. Uh, like I said earlier, I just think this board should stay out. The, uh, delegation, the, I think it's three members of the delegation have already, uh, passed something and they've planned and they're already doing it. So I don't know what the purpose of, uh, this board has to do with this. Especially with the legal, uh, ramifications and all from, uh, what's that? Rainbow House and all that we've heard about and all. And I, I, I have a, an issue with that, with us approving that, without that being cleared. You know, there's a lawsuit out there and it just, to me, opens us up for criticism and, and everything else that, that we are promoting such. So I would like to see, uh, all that cleared up.
This has nothing to do with the Rainbow House and this resolution. Which was passed, moved by the delegation unanimously, passed by the State House unanimously, and passed by the State Senate unanimously.
Commissioner Hamburg?
So for me, to move this forward and, or to be in hindrance to using our, any part of the county or, or, or engaging with them, I, I don't see it.
Uh, let me, let me just clear up something. It was not passed unanimously. Uh, as a matter of fact, the first time it failed.
Sure did.
And it was added in the last of the legislative session where a lot of bills were just put together and stuck in there. But when it was first, uh, presented, it did not pass. It did fail. But it passed later because it was added to something. And I'm not saying don't do it. I'm just saying that I just think the legal part as far as the board of, uh, Board of Commissioners is concerned is that, um, I mean, well, like I say, we got that, but there is a lawsuit which includes the board out there. And I just think we should hold off. I'm done.
All right. And I also agree with Commissioner Hamburg. There is a lawsuit out there and, um, you know, I think that we should wait until the lawsuit is finished and then we can go from there. But again, um, I'm going to put this to a vote at this time. And Commissioner Hamburg?
If you don't mind, real quickly, so what is this obligating the Board of Commissioners to do?
Doing nothing but just, in a sense, having a meet and greet with them at this event. And we can advertise how we choose to advertise it using, uh, uh, our, our county media, county logos, whatever we want to use.
All right. Are you ready for the vote? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
All right. The ayes and, um, any abstentions? The ayes have it and the motion passes. Next is item twenty-five, Board Appointment for Code Enforcement. Clea Etheridge's term expired on July sixteen, twenty-twenty-five. The new term is for three years, expired on July sixteen, twenty-twenty-eight. At this time, I need a motion for the Board Appointment for Code Enforcement.
I move that we reappoint Ms. Clea Etheridge to the Board of Code Enforcement.
I would like to second that, uh, reappointment for Dr. Clea Etheridge.
All right. Is there any discussion at this time? Are you ready for the question? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it and the motion passes. Next, Board Appointment for Code Enforcement. Lorraine Oliver's term is expired July sixteenth, twenty-twenty-five. The new term is for three years, a full board appointment. Um, at this time, I move that we make a motion to appoint Ms. Teresa Tally to the Code Enforcement Board. Can I get a second?
Second.
All right. All right, is there any discussion at this time? All right, are you ready for the question? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it and the motion passes. Thank you. Next will be item twenty-seven, Board Appointment to the Community Service Board. Victoria Williams' term expired on June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four. The new term is for three years, um, and this will be full board appointment. Again, um, I make a motion that we reappoint Ms. Victoria Williams to the Community Service Board.
Second.
All right. Is there any discussion at this time? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it and the motion passes. Next, we have item twenty-eight, Community Service Board. Anselle Davis resigned. The existing term expires on September sixteen, twenty-twenty-six. This is a, uh, District Four was the last, um, um, district to make this appointment, who, um, who would like to make the appointment at this time?
I, I would like to make it. Um, I would like to appoint Ms. Sendeiti Dunson. I know it's a difficult name to pronounce. Sendeiti Dunson.
All right, Sendeiti Dunson.
To the Board of Community Service.
All right. I second that. All right, is there any discussion at this time? Are you ready for the vote? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it and the motion passes. Item twenty-nine, Board Appointment to the Community Service Board. Junior Jackson's term expired on June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five. The new term for three years, um, is up. And so full board, District One was the last district, and so this is a District One appointment.
I would like to nominate Ms. Letitia Higgs to the Community Service Board.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion at this time? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it and the motion passes. Thank you. Next is Board Appointments to the Board of Zoning and Appeals. Uh, Atanya Jean Funnies' term will, will expire on August nineteenth, twenty-twenty-five. The new term begins on August twentieth, twenty-twenty-five and expires on August nineteenth, twenty-twenty-eight. Commissioner Allen, what is your pleasure?
I would like to appoint Mr. David Hamburg to the Board of Zoning and Appeals.
All right. Can I get a second on that?
Second.
All right. Any discussion at this time? All right, are you ready for the question? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it and the motion passes. Next is the Board Appointment for Family and Children's Services. Dr. Barbara, Barbara Williams' term expired on June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five. The new term is for five years. And the last appointment was from the BOC Chair. I would like to reappoint Dr. Barbara, Barbara Williams to the Department of Family and Children's Services Board.
I second.
All right. Any discussion at this time, board members? Are you ready for the vote? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All of, any opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it and the motion passes. Next will be item thirty-two, Board Appointment to the Greenspace Land Trust Board. Mary Keith's term expired on May eighteenth, twenty-twenty-five. The new term is for four years. Commissioner Hamburg, what is your pleasure?
I would like to reappoint Ms. Mary Keith to this board.
All right. I second that motion at this time. Is there any discussion?
I have a, it's not, uh, when does this board meet?
Who's responsible for the Greenspace Board? Is that, uh, is that, uh, which, who's coming? Ms. Horner, you coming or COO, are you coming? All right. All right. COO, Stanford, please approach the bench.
Yes, ma'am. So, um, as Ms. Horner was coming forth, the Greenspace Trust Board is, um, a subset of parts of recreation. It's actually, um, being as needed.
Okay.
Um, they usually meet somewhere in between twice a year. But a lot of times it's driven by, there needs to be land acquisition or land dispersment. So that's an as-needed basis.
We have the Director.
Director, will you please come up?
I know, but I appreciate you. Um, good evening, Board. I just want to add that, um, it's a useful board to us. Although they meet as needed, they do have a lot of great information as it pertains to Greenspace and they are a fundraising board too, if there's anything that we need. So Stephanie, she definitely loves her board and we need it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next is third number, I, uh, we, okay, um, I'm sorry, I'm about to go. Y'all threw me off. All right. Um, are you ready for the vote? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it and the motion passes. Item thirty-three, Board Appointment to the Library Board of Trustees. Ebonyne Miller's appointment expired on November second, twenty-twenty-four. The new term is for three years. And Commissioner Reeves, what is your pleasure?
I'd like to hold that appointment until the August nineteenth meeting.
All right. So duly noted. Thank you. All right. Next is item thirty-four, Board Appointment to the Metropolitan Atlanta Rapid Transit Authority Citizens Advisory Board. Shonda Ross's appointment expired on April sixth, twenty-twenty-five. The new term is for two years. Commissioner Reeves, what is your pleasure?
I'd like to hold items thirty-four and thirty-five until the August nineteenth meeting.
Okay. So we will hold items thirty-four.
Do we do those at the same time?
Thirty-three, thirty-four, and thirty-five.
We can do those at the same time or do we have to do those separately?
Um, you can do both at the same time.
Okay.
Okay. So we just, um, I need a motion to hold, um, thirty-three, thirty-four, and thirty-five.
Oh. So moved.
All right. And can I, I second that motion. Is there any discussion at this time? All right, are you ready for the question? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it and the motion passes. All right, item thirty-six, Board Appointment to the Solid Waste, uh, Management Authority. Rob Leatherwood's term expired on July thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five. The new term begins on August first, twenty-twenty-five. Um, and expires on July thirty-first, twenty-twenty-nine. Commissioner Davis, what's your pleasure?
I move to appoint Mr. Derwin Davis to the Solid Waste Management Authority.
All right. Second that motion. Is there any discussion at this time? Are you ready for the vote? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it and the motion passes. Next is Board Appointment to the Solid Waste Management Authority. Demaria Swain was removed from the Solid Waste Management Authority Board due to inactivity. The existing terms expires on August twentieth, twenty-twenty-six. Commissioner Reeves, what's your pleasure?
I'd also like to hold this appointment until August nineteenth.
All right. So your motion is to hold it to August nineteenth. I second that motion.
Thank you.
Is there any discussion at this time? All right, are you?
We don't have to vote on the whole?
We don't have to vote on the whole, do we?
You typically don't.
Okay, so let's keep going. You got me, we have votes coming up. We got to do thirty, but, all right. All right. Number twenty-eight, Board Appointing to Tourism Authority. Um, at this point in time, I'm going to hold that one and I will appoint, um, someone to, uh, go into that space. Um, thirty-nine is Board Appointment to the Zoning Advisory Group. Altemis D's term on the ZAG Board will expire on August nineteenth, twenty-twenty-five. The new term is for three years, expired on August nineteenth, twenty-twenty-eight. Commissioner Allen, what's your pleasure?
Um, I would also like to hold, uh, that board appointment to the next board meeting, August nineteenth.
All right. Thank you. All right. And item number forty, Board Appointment to the Zoning Advisory Board. Audrey Lewis's term expires on August nineteenth, twenty-twenty-five. The new term is for three years, expired on, on August nineteen, twenty-twenty-eight. Commissioner Hamburg, what is your pleasure?
Uh, yes, I would like to reappoint Ms. Audrey Lewis to the Zoning Advisory Group.
Thank you. I second that motion at this time. Is there any discussion? All right, let's, are you ready for the vote? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it and the motion passes. All right. Attorney Reed, do we have need for executive session at this time?
Yes. Personnel and litigation.
All right. I need a motion to go into executive session for personnel and litigation purposes.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Is there any discussion? Are you ready for the vote? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it and the motion passes. We will now go into executive session. Thank you. I need a motion to return from executive session.
So moved.
All right, can I, can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion at this time? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it and the motion passes. Mr. Reed?
All right. Um, I would like to have a motion to authorize, um, Napoli Shkolnik to, um, vote via master ballot regarding the Purdue Sackler bankruptcy on behalf of Clayton County.
All right. Can I get a, can I get a, can I get a motion? That was a lie. So moved. Can I get a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion at this time? Are you ready for the vote? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it and the motion passes. Next?
A second is to approve a settlement between Amelia Stephen on one hand, Joshua Deonte Scandret in the Board of Commissioners on the other. Uh, relating to an automobile collision that occurred on January eighth, twenty-twenty-four in the amount of thirty-two thousand, uh, dollars. And authorize the Chief Financial Officer to amend the budget to reflect an appropriate revenue source, uh, expense as required under the terms of the agreement.
So moved. All right. I second that motion. Is there any discussion at this time? Are you ready for the, for the question? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it and the motion passes.
And the final thing is to authorize, um, me to be appointed, or to appoint me as a fact finder to look into, uh, the actions of the clerk and report a recommendation back to you by, uh, August eighth.
All right. Can I get a?
About Friday?
Friday.
Friday, August eighth.
So moved.
So moved.
I second. Is there any discussion at this time? All right. All, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it and the motion passes. Is that it, Mr. Reed?
For me.
Okay. All right. Mr. D.C., excuse me, Mr. COO.
Board, I'm bringing before you, um, the actual recommendation to serve, um, as an appointment for the Senior Services Director.